Good evening. Good evening. I'll call the April 15, 2020 meeting of the Lebanon City Council to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will read. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we'll start off this evening with a few announcements by the city manager relative to our remote broadcast. This meeting is being conducted by virtual means, by phone, as well as Microsoft Teams Live. This is in accordance with the provisions of RSA 91A, as well as the emergency order issued by the governor. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic situation, it is not practical for the council to meet in person for public health reasons. Therefore, we are conducting the meeting in this particular fashion. I would ask everybody to put their phones, or if they're participating by computer, on mute, so that there's no distractions here. When the governor does open the... Governor? The mayor? Well, the mayor announces that he is opening up the meeting for public comment. If you are on the phone, please dial *6, and then you can participate, ask questions, or make comments in the meeting. And of course, councillors, you're familiar with what you need to do in that regard. So let me further do a mayor if you would, ahead of the giving of the meeting. Thank you very much. So we'll start with a public forum announcement. As we always do, any member of the public who desires to speak on any item may do so when the item is taken up by the council. It will be allowed to speak on a subject for not more than three minutes. We're asking you to state your name, your ward of residence if you live in the city, and to speak slowly and clearly as we're trying to record all these conversations. We always start our meetings by opening it up to the public for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if anyone from the public has any items that we'd like to comment on that are not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to do so. We're seeing nothing? Okay, hearing nothing from the public, we will start with our roll call, so we know what councillors are on the line. Councillor Winnie?
President.
Councillor Zook?
Yes, President.
Thank you. Councillor Heistin?
President.
Assistant Mayor Beal? Assistant Mayor Beal?
Technical difficulties, present.
All right, thank you very much. Councillor Prentis, I believe, is going to be a bit late unless she's online now. Okay, Councillor Sykes? Not present. Councillor Hill? Councillor Hill is apparently not present. And let's see, who am I leaving off here? Oh, Councillor Bronner. Councillor Beal, I believe you're sharing your screen, and that's what we're seeing. Councillor Bronner appears to not be online either. So we have with us tonight at present the mayor, myself, Councillor Winnie, Councillor Zook, Councillor Heistin, Assistant Mayor Beal, and hopefully we'll have Councillor Prentis before too long. So we have a forum here, so we will go ahead and get started. Please, we will do everything by roll call vote. And so I will ask you to vote. You can affirm that you who you are, and whether it's yea or nay, and whatever we're voting on. So we're going to start this evening with a couple of recognitions. The first one, and I'll read this out loud, is to former city historian Ed Ashi. Whereas Ed Ashi served as the formal city historian for the city of Lebanon for six years, from March 2014 through April 2020. And whereas Ed, in his capacity as city historian, has served as a member of the Heritage Commission with the city of Lebanon from 2014 through April 2020. And whereas, while serving his capacity of city historian, Ed has demonstrated his commitment to involving and educating the public about the city of Lebanon and its rich past. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and contributions made by individuals such as Ed Ashi. And whereas, Ed continues to serve as the curator of the Lebanon Historical Society, providing valuable service to that organization and to the community. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Lebanon City Council, on behalf of the city of Lebanon, extends its sincere appreciation to Ed Ashi for his time, effort, and knowledge provided to the community during his services as city historian, and as a member of the Heritage Commission, and looks forward to his continued involvement in the education of the history of Lebanon through the Lebanon Historical Society. It further resolved that this resolution be written upon the minutes of the Lebanon City Council meeting, and a copy presented to Ed Ashi. Dated this 15th day of April 2020, at Lebanon, New Hampshire, Timothy J. McNamara, Mayor, on behalf of Lebanon City Council. And I'd like to personally thank Ed. He's spent a lot of time helping to educate me about the city, and I hope he will continue to do so whenever anyone seeks out his services. Our second resolution is in honor of our volunteers. And it states, whereas the Lebanon City Council recognizes National Volunteer Appreciation Week, April 19 through 20, 2020, and recognizes the importance of community volunteers, and wishes to encourage an environment in which volunteers can flourish. And whereas, there are hundreds of volunteers in our community who give their time and their effort to help others through their charitable, through their community organizations, churches, service clubs, schools, hospitals, charitable organizations, recreational events, and other worthy endeavors. And whereas, our city government could not function without volunteers who serve on our boards, committees, and commissions. And whereas, every day volunteers help shape the policies that keep our city heading in the right direction, and the impact can be felt throughout the community. And whereas, volunteers are motivated by the simple satisfaction of helping their fellow citizens, making their community a better place to live. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Lebanon City Council do hereby express our sincere gratitude for the hard work and selfless dedication of the hundreds of volunteers who serve the city of Lebanon and the community, and we extend our appreciation to their valued efforts. Dated this 15th day of April 2020, at Lebanon, New Hampshire, Timothy J. McNamara, Mayor, on behalf of the Lebanon City Council. Thank you to all of our volunteers. Yeah. As you all probably know, last week, we lost one of the more valued members of our community and a longtime volunteer for the city, Gregory Schwartz. Greg has given so much of his time and energy and effort to the city over the years. I served for many years with him on the planning board, and I valued greatly his expertise, his thoughtfulness, and his real dedication to every project that came before us, and the review of those projects. So I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Greg. We will be recognizing him at some point, hopefully in the very near future, more formally. So please take a moment of silence and number in Greg. Thank you. Okay. The next item we have on our agenda tonight is acceptance of minutes for the March 25, 2020 organizational meeting, and the April 1, 2020 regular meeting. Would one of the councillors like to offer a motion?
Councillor Winnie will make a motion?
Yes, Councillor Winnie, please make your motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented in the April 15, 2020 agenda packet.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Councillor Heistin will second.
Councillor Heistin seconds the motion. Is there any discussion of these minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a voice vote. Councillor Winnie?
Aye. Councillor Winnie says aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook says yes.
Councillor Heistin?
Councillor Heistin says aye.
Councillor Beal?
Councillor Beal says yes.
Thank you. Councillor Prentis is not with us yet. And Councillor Sykes, Hill, and Bronner are not here. Mayor McNamara votes yes. The minutes are accepted. As written. Okay, the next item we have, next item we have on our agenda are appointments. We have one tonight. It's Bruce Garland to the planning board. This nomination is made by the manager, does not require a second. I will acknowledge that Bruce is the chairman of the planning board currently, and has been for a while. And do you want to offer any other comments?
Other than the obvious thing, that he's obviously qualified, but there's also... There's no reason that he doesn't have a board meeting on the F and E position. I recommend that he be nighed for the permanent position of the planning board.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors, on Mr. Garland's nomination to the planning board for a regular position?
No, but I would just support that nomination. Bruce has also volunteered time with the municipal aggregation subcommittee of LIAC, although he's not a member of LIAC. But he's brought some, a good perspective, and some thoughtful questions to the process. So I think he's, yeah, an excellent contribution to the community.
Thank you very much, Assistant Mayor Beal. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll call for a voice vote. Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Councillor Heistin? Councillor Heistin? Councillor Heistin appears to have lost this connection. Oh, Councillor Heistin, there he is.
I'm back on again, and I'll vote in favor.
Thank you very much. Assistant Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor McNamara votes yes. So that's unanimous. The appointment of Bruce Garland to the planning board. Okay, we will start with our public hearing items. And the first item we have is one that we discussed in our last meeting, and that's the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Application for Dana Segwin for the property at 4 South Park Street. And I believe we have David Brooks on the line to discuss this.
We do.
Yes, good evening. This is David Brooks, the planning director.
Hi, David.
Yes, this is an application for an extension of the participation in the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program for Dana Segwin. The council approved his participation in March of 2016 to grant seven years of limited property tax relief in association with a project that he's working on at 4 South Park Street. The council granted, re-granted seven years of that limited property tax relief in April of 2017, when Mr. Segwin failed to meet, or was unable to meet, one of the deadlines set forth in the original decision. Since then, Mr. Segwin has obtained some modifications of the project with the planning board. And at this time, he is seeking to align the council's tax relief program with the timelines of his planning board approval. So in that sense, he is looking for, again, seven years of limited property tax relief that would begin here in March of 2020, and would require him to obtain a building permit by April 10 of 2021, which again aligns with his planning board decision.
Very good, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open this hearing to the public. Is there an item from the public online that has any questions regarding this community revitalization tax relief application by Dana Segwin? Hearing no input from the public, I will close the public hearing. Councillors, do you have any questions regarding this application? Hearing no questions, I'll ask if someone could offer a motion.
Councillor Winnie will make a motion?
Thank you, Councillor Winnie.
Be hereby resolved by the Lebanon City Council after a duly noticed public hearing that, whereas the city council has determined that the application of Dana Segwin here and after the applicant for property assessment tax relief under the city's 79-E program is complete enough to commence consideration. And whereas, the city council has determined that the applicant's property located at 4 South Park Street, tax map 92 lot 8, here and after the property is situated in the downtown Lebanon 79E district as adopted by the city, and therefore meets the 79E program requirements as a qualifying structure. And whereas, the city council has determined that the applicant's project to construct four additional multifamily dwelling units on the property pursuant to plans and information provided in the application, here and after the project exceeds the lesser of 15% of the current prehabilitation assessed valuation, or $75,000, and therefore meets the 79E program requirement as a substantial rehabilitation. And whereas, the city council has determined that the applicant's proposed project will generate one or more public benefits to the city, including, one, an increase in residential housing in the downtown Lebanon 79E district, and, two, the promotion of development of the downtown district, providing for efficiency, safety, and a greater sense of community consistent with New Hampshire RSA 9B. Now therefore, pursuant to the provisions of the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, NHRSA 79E program, as adopted by the city, the city council hereby grants the applicant seven years of property assessment tax relief for the property as a result of the project to commence upon completion of the project with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall grant the city of Lebanon a declaration of covenant to be recorded in the Grafton County Register of Deeds, ensuring that the project shall be maintained and used in a manner that furthers the public benefits set forth above, for which this property tax relief is granted. The term of the declaration of covenant shall be effective for 14 years, which is twice the duration of the approved tax relief period as permitted under RSA 79E:8. On the two, the recorded declaration of covenant shall be a burden upon the property, and shall bind all transparees and assigns of such property. Two, the applicant shall obtain and maintain property and casualty insurance, as well as flood insurance if appropriate, for twice the number of years of property tax relief granted to ensure proper restoration or replacement of the project and the property. Such insurance shall name the city as an additional insured by endorsement, and the city shall be provided with certificates of insurance annually. The applicant agrees to have the city made a loss payee of the proceeds of any property or casualty insurance coverage, subject to the rights of any current or future mortgagie of the property and any structures thereon, for the purpose of ensuring proper and timely restoration or demolition of the property, including any damaged structures thereon. The city further requires that restoration or demolition commence within one year of the following, one year following the date of any occurrence or incident for which an insurance claim is or could be made. Otherwise, the applicant shall be subject to the termination provisions set forth in RSA 79E:9. One, the obligation to name the city as an additional insured and a loss payee shall remain in effect for the term of these covenants. Three, the applicant shall obtain a building permit for the project and commence construction no later than April 10, 2021, unless otherwise extended by the city council in writing. The project as approved shall be completed on or before March 31, 2022, unless otherwise extended by the city in writing.
Thank you, Councillor Winnie. A very keenly an effort, if I say so myself. Would someone like to second that extensive motion?
Caroling will second.
Yes, Councillor Heistin seconds the motion. Councillors, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a voice vote. Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Councillor Heistin?
Councillor Heistin votes aye.
Assistant Mayor Beal?
Beal votes yea.
Thank you. And Mayor McNamara votes yes. So that makes it unanimous. The community revitalization tax relief is granted to Mr. Segwin's project. Our second public hearing item is in regard to ordinance 2020-05. This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action to amend City Code Chapter 68, Fees, Article 1, Water Investment Fee, to update and to clarify the language and to implement a water development fee. And I believe we have a presentation by our Public Works Department?
Yes, Mr. Corley? Tom, if you can bring him up.
Yeah, I wasn't going to do a full presentation. I was just going to highlight the main points of the PowerPoint that we did on April 1st. So this is a change to our existing water investment fee that's been in place since 1981. And we're adding to that a water development fee that's based on a gasp evaluation of our system. The biggest change with that is that fee is going to be based on flow and not meter size, like the current water investment fee is. So the water investment fee is only for new sources of water or expansion of the system, and the water development fee can be used for renovation, maintaining, and repairing the system. The cost isn't changing, it's just creating two pools of money, one for the renovation, maintaining, and repairing of the system, and the one that's currently existing for the new sources of water and expansion. So there's no change to someone obtaining a building permit for a new structure, it'd be the same cost to them, and the only other people that would be affected by this would be people that are upsizing their water service size. So that is, that is what we're doing here, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Just one thing to add to that. We are changing for the water investment fee was based on meter size, and now it's going to be based on gallons per day. So that is a change in the actual structure. But as Jay had stated, it's not going to change the amount that is charged to people, and the amount is going to stay the same. It's just going to be funds that we do receive, instead of going into one pot of money, will actually be divided up and go into two parts of money. The city doesn't have any plans to expand its water system. It does need to find other sources of water as a backup, but it has no plans to use public funds to expand the system. The real need that the city has is to upgrade the existing distribution system that is very, it's very old, it's in poor shape in many parts of the city. We want to use those funds for that purpose, to help offset the cost to ratepayers. As we all know, the rates are rather high, and they're projected to continue at 8% for 2023. This is one of the methodologies we're hoping to use to curb that interest.
Okay, this is again a public hearing, so I'm going to open this up to the public. If there's any member of the public online who would like to ask any questions or make comments with regard to the proposed water development fee, please do so. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this. Councillors, we had an extensive discussion about this in our last meeting, and we've had a summary this evening. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments on the proposed water development fee? Would someone like to make a motion?
Councillor Beal will make a motion.
Thank you, Councillor Beal.
I move that the Lebanon City Council hereby adopts ordinance number 2000, I'm sorry, 2020-05 to amend City Code Chapter 68, Fees, Article 1, Water Investment Fee, to update and clarify language and to implement a water development fee. And I'd like to speak to my motion.
Let's get a second, and then you can shortly speak to it. Would someone like to second that motion?
Caroling will second.
Councillor Heistin seconds the motion, yes.
Well, as I think the community, the whole community is generally aware, the city has invested a lot of money over the past decade or so in improvements to the water and sewer system, primarily to separate the storm water flows from the sanitary flows, so we don't pollute the rivers during high water events. But, but, you know, that's left us challenged to maintain other parts of the system that haven't been touched by those years of investment in the CSO project. So I think this is a way that as more new development is added to our existing capacity, we can reinvest some of the cost of that, use of that capacity, to help maintain and expand that capacity in the systematic way that the current administration has been working to get us on a schedule that we can sustain our system over the long term at affordable overall rates. So that's, I think this is a good step forward.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor Beal. Any other questions? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Thank you. Councillor Heistin?
Councillor Heistin votes yes.
Councillor Beal?
Councillor Beal votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes. That makes it unanimous. Thank you very much, councillors. Now onto our last public hearing of the evening, and this is a public hearing to discuss amending the capital budget to include the Spencer Street reconstruction project and to appropriate $100,000 for design engineering. And I think we'll have a brief presentation by staff on this.
Yes, I'll take care of that. And obviously, Jim Dodson, DPW Director, can jump in afterwards if there's anything else to add. At the present time, we have $300,000 that was appropriated in the capital budget for 2020, and that was for the purposes of demolishing the structures at 20 Spencer Street, as well as environmental cleanup. The bids actually came in at just under $200,000, and that project is pretty much complete. Those buildings have been demolished, and there's some minor cycle that still needs to occur, but that was completed last week. So that leaves us about $100,000 left over in that appropriation. We would like to use that $100,000 to start the engineering of the reconstruction of Spencer Street. That is a key component that would go along in the development of 20 Spencer Street, and it needs to be done in the event roads are in very poor condition, there's drainage where that needs to occur, as well as water and sewer main replacement. If we can get these funds appropriated now, or transferred from that capital budget to a new capital account, that will allow us to get the engineering done, so that we can actually, the work can coincide with the development of the property by the Braverman Company. That's a state. And as you probably know, we have components that we have to do as part of that arrangement, that proposed arrangement. That includes some sidewalk work there and other work along the edge of the roadway. This will allow us to get that, a timing for engineering work to be done, so that development can occur with the development of the property.
Thank you, City Manager Malala. Again, this is a public hearing, so I will open this up to the public for any questions or comments. And again, this is with regard to reallocating funds from the Spencer Street demolition project, or reconstruction project, to design engineering for street improvements. Is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments regarding this proposal? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councillors, do you have any additional questions or comments on this matter? Hearing none, would someone like to make a motion?
Councillor Winnie will make a motion?
Please do, Councillor Winnie.
Resolved by the city of Lebanon that the 2020 capital improvements fund budget included an appropriation in the amount of $300,000 for the 20 Spencer Street cleanup project. Be it further resolved that the costs associated with 20 Spencer Street cleanup project will not exceed $200,000. Be it further resolved by the city of Lebanon that the 2020 capital improvements fund budget is hereby amended to include the Spencer Street reconstruction project, and that funds in the amount of $100,000 be appropriated for transfer from the 20 Spencer Street cleanup project to the Spencer Street reconstruction project to fund the engineering design costs associated with the project.
Thank you very much, Councillor Winnie. Do I hear a second?
Councillor Zook will second.
Councillor Zook seconds, thank you, Councillor Zook. Any further questions? We'll take a voice vote. Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Thank you, Councillor Zook. Councillor Heistin?
Councillor Heistin votes aye.
Councillor Heistin votes aye.
Councillor Beal?
Councillor Beal votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes. That makes it unanimous. Thank you, folks. Okay, moving on to old business. We have one item of old business this evening. This is a presentation of a second reading of an amendment to ordinance number 18 Salary Plan, Article Three Bargaining Unit Employees. This is to include the position of Assistant City Engineer within the pay scale for the Lebanon Professional Administrative and Salried Employees La Paz Bargaining Unit. Do we have a presentation?
If you want one, yes.
Yes, up to a brief one.
Okay. HR Director Aluskovitz is on the phone. If you could, just a minute, if you could unmute yourself and apply a presentation on this. So she's not unmuting herself. So in any event, this is a position within DPW. It's presently a member of the Ashtray Union. We're changing it to the La Paz Union because it more fits into that technical definition than the typical Ashtray positions that we have. It also will change the grade of that particular position, and that's to Assistant City Engineer. Was it Engineering Technician or Engineering Assistant before? So that's the purpose of this. As you know, it requires three hearings for council to approve that, and there are official jobs and descriptions that have been changed, so a lot of changes to that. Very good, thank you. Councilors, this is our second reading. We've heard this once before. Does anyone have any questions?
No, but Councillor Beal will make a motion.
Yes, please do, Councillor Beal.
I move that the Lebanon City Council acknowledges the second of three presentations to amend Ordinance Number 18 Salary Plan, Article Three Bargaining Unit Employees, Lebanon Professional Administrative and Salried Employees La Paz by including the position of Assistant City Engineer Grade Nine.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Councillor Heistin will second.
Councillor Heistin seconds. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Councillor Heistin?
Councillor Heistin votes aye.
Councillor Beal?
Councillor Beal votes yea.
And Mayor McNamara votes yea. It's unanimous, and we'll move on to the third reading then at a future meeting. Okay, that takes care of old business. We have several items of new business this evening, and the first is the semi-annual release of collected school impact fees. Would someone from staff like to summarize that?
It's the normal release of that, like it goes to, we collect the impact fees from developments that goes to the school district. It's part of the impact fees in charge.
And the amount this time?
I don't have it from here right now. Somebody has that package. I have the agenda right at the moment.
I can speak to it real quickly. This is Paula Mayville.
Yes, Paula, you would please. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is the quarterly requirement according to the memorandum of understanding that we have with the school district that we collect public impact fees that need to be released to them to help them pay the bond on the middle school. The dispersment for this quarter is $40,432, which is included in part of your motion.
Thank you very much. Councilors, would someone like to make a motion?
Councillor Heistin will move. Move that in accordance with Section 213.10 Administrative Impact Fees of the Lebanon Zoning Ordinance, City Council authorizes dispersing the sum of $40,432 in two cents in collected public schools' impact fees to the Lebanon School District to be applied towards the payment of debt on the new middle school located at the intersection of Molton Avenue and Route Four. This being consistent with the September 2010 memorandum of understanding between the City of Lebanon and the Lebanon School District, SAU 88.
Thank you, Councillor Heistin. Do I hear a second?
Councillor Winnie will second.
Councillor Winnie seconds. Motion's been made and seconded. We'll take a voice vote. Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Councillor Heistin?
Councillor Heistin votes aye.
Assistant Mayor Beal?
Councillor Beal votes yes.
Mayor McNamara votes yes. It's unanimous. The next item is a discussion and semi-public hearing for May 6, 2020. That'll be our next meeting. This is relative to adoption of provisions of New Hampshire RSA 72:85 exemption for electric energy storage systems. So this was a statute that was passed, I believe, that took effect in October of last year that allows municipalities, if they so choose to do that, it's an A-1 legislation that allows you to adopt that. And that is in regards to batteries to store like solar energy or storing electricity at night when the prices are lower so that it can be used during the daytime if you have real-time pricing. That is the purpose of that. It's for the batteries themselves and associated equipment that goes along with that. So that component would be, it's in a house or a commercial building, that would not be, it'll be exempted from taxation, property taxation, if this were adopted. People would have to apply for it like they do the solar exemption or the other exemptions every year. Well, not, once they get it approved, it's not every year, it's a great timeline. But that's, that's along and the short of what that does if that council chooses to approve it. Thank you very much. Councilors, any questions or comment before we call for a motion? Hearing none, would someone like to make a motion?
Councillor Winnie will make a motion.
Thank you, Councillor Winnie. Please do.
I'll move that the Lebanon City Council hereby sets a public hearing for Wednesday, May 6, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM remote via Microsoft Teams for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action to adopt the provisions of NH RSA 72:85 exemption for electric energy storage systems.
Do I hear a second?
Councillor Heistin will second.
Councillor Heistin seconds. Motion's been made and seconded relative to the exemption for electric energy storage systems. Any further discussion? We'll call for a voice vote. Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Councillor Heistin?
Councillor Heistin votes yea.
Councillor Beal?
Councillor Beal votes yea.
Mayor McNamara votes yes as well. Passes unanimously. Okay. The next item of new business this evening is the presentation of findings from the West Lebanon Charette and discussion of next steps. And I believe we have City Planner David Brooks on the line to discuss this and have a visual presentation.
Yes, good evening. David Brooks, Planning Director. Can you see my cover slide?
Absolutely.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. As you know, on October 18th and 19th of last year, the Planning Department hosted a visioning charrette to explore how Main Street in West Lebanon and the surrounding area. It could be some different sessions to work together on the formulation of a potential vision for the West Lebanon Village. This is meant to be a brief presentation to highlight the charrette process and a few of the ideas and outcomes from the two-day event. These ideas and others are more fully described in the charrette report, which is included in the council's agenda packet for tonight. For those, for those not familiar with this type of community engagement event, a charrette is an open iterative process that uses a series of feedback and review cycles to refine basic ideas from basic concepts to specific alternatives, and ultimately to a working plan. Through the collaborative process, participants develop a sense of pride and ownership in the final result. This particular visioning effort stemmed directly from the West Lebanon chapter of the 2012 Master Plan with the goal of providing a forum for the community to consider ideas for addressing and implementing the strategies and actions listed in the West Lebanon chapter. For the charrette, we concentrated principally on Main Street and the primary approaches to it. We ultimately divided the overall study area into three separate focus areas, including the south gateway and riverfront area, the village core, and the north gateway riverfront In the weeks leading up to the two-day charrette, we created a project website to help disseminate information and an online survey to gauge community interest and support for some of those basic concepts, which became a starting point for the charrette process. More than 250 responses were received during the six-week survey period. Just one question shown here, but again, all of the questions and responses are included in Appendix A of the charrette report. Here you can see that a better landscape was the most frequently, a better streetscape, rather, was the most frequently cited improvement that survey respondents felt could make West Lebanon Village better. During the two-day charrette, we hosted multiple different engagement events at Kilton Library and at Seminary Hill School, including a stakeholders meeting, walking tour, a visioning session, design open house, interactive polling and small group discussions, and a Saturday afternoon final presentation. Much of the charrette built on prior reports and studies of the West Lebanon area, and many of the issues and opportunities heard throughout this event mirrored those identified in prior studies. The condition of Westbury Yard was frequently mentioned as the biggest issue and biggest opportunity for West Lebanon. The impression given off by Westbury Yard extends to Main Street itself in comments about the streetscape and the overall appearance. Parks, open space, recreation were strongly desired, especially trying to reconnect to the Connecticut River, which is a significant asset for the West Lebanon Village. Transportation was a common theme, more and better connectivity within West Lebanon Village and to and from the surrounding neighborhoods, also the need for housing of all types, and the desire for more restaurants, cafes, and things to do. From all of the input received, including the 2012 Master Plan, the surveys, the prior studies, and et cetera, the consultants went to work developing a planning framework to highlight a handful of the specific ideas which were felt to have the greatest potential for benefiting West Lebanon Village. Starting at the south end of the study area, Westbury Yard, again, encompasses many possibilities based on the vision concepts expressed by the community for that area. Beyond simply removing the existing dilapidated structures, if the city can gain control over a portion of the property, there are many opportunities for open space and recreation, river views and connections, celebration of heritage, and even alternative access possibilities that would remove some heavy truck traffic from Main Street. For this area, the consultants conceived of a park space with views of the river, connections to walking and biking paths, and opportunities for passive recreation and playgrounds. There could also be opportunities to integrate designs and materials that reflect the historic buildings and uses of the property. There are a lot of opportunities to consider depending on if the city can gain control and for how much of the property. The intersection of Main Street with South Main and Seminary Hill also provides some opportunities that were explored in the charrette, in this case to establish a southern gateway for the West Lebanon Village. The now vacant parcel at the corner of Seminary Hill and South Main, along with physical improvements to the intersection below it that are tied to the Dry Bridge project, provide an opportunity to create a real sense of arrival into the village and Main Street from points south and east, and to give people the impression that they are entering an important and special place. For this site, the consultants conceived of a multi-tiered park space with sitting areas and vistas to the north along Main Street and to the west over toward the future park space in Westbury Yard, the Connecticut River, and beyond. Alternatively, this property could be used as a redevelopment site for economic development while still enhancing the gateway experience. In either scenario, could provide new branding opportunities for West Lebanon Village. The charrette looked at the intersection of Main Street, Tracy Street, and Railroad Avenue near the midpoint of Main Street as an opportunity to define a village core. There may be opportunities to leverage the presence of the existing civic uses like Kilton Library, the West Lebanon Fire Station, and former West Lebanon Library, and to re-envision the public transit hub into an asset that helps bring people right into the heart of the village. Adding new streetscape improvements like street trees, decorative lighting, benches, planters, along with attractive signage and wayfinding at this node and all along Main Street has the potential to significantly improve the aesthetics and the feel of being in West Lebanon Village. At the north end of the study area, similar to the opportunities at the south end, the intersection of Main Street, Bridge Street, North Main, and Dana represents an opportunity to establish a northern gateway into the village. Again, improvements to this intersection have the potential to create a sense of arrival from points north and west. Here, the consultants envisioned a roundabout concept that could provide opportunities for improved traffic flow, safer pedestrian movements, and new development sites or redevelopment sites. It could also provide opportunities for beautification as you enter and arrive at Main Street. In terms of a sense of arrival, the approach to West Lebanon Village from Vermont over the new Lyman Bridge creates a first impression of a community that is not fully capitalizing on its assets, especially its beautiful natural location. The properties adjacent to the Connecticut River on Bridge Street represent opportunities to alter that arrival experience and the resulting first impressions for people coming from Vermont. These properties have the potential to accommodate the mixed-use development that the community has indicated to be desirable, with perhaps retail, commercial uses fronting on Bridge Street, and additional residential development overlooking the river. Similarly, the riverfront parcel on the south side of Bridge Street is an opportunity site that is already under control by the city. Prior plans for a car-top boat launch were not fully realized after the completion of the Lyman Bridge project, and the property is currently underutilized and not well-maintained. Once properly finished and maintained, the property represents one of the best opportunities in the entire city to reconnect to the Connecticut River. It could also serve as a trailhead access and parking location for walking trails along the river. With active use, this property could create a significantly different first impression of West Lebanon Village. The two-day charrette only skimmed the surface of what is possible for enhancing West Lebanon Village. An implementation table at the end of the charrette report summarizes the concepts that are discussed and presented in the report. It also begins to identify some of the key actions and appropriate champions to take leading roles in executing the different ideas. However, more public engagement and city council direction will be needed to prioritize actions and strategies, and the implementation table will need to be updated regularly as projects are realized and new ideas are envisioned. Overall, the community engagement and participation over the course of the two-day charrette largely reiterated and reinforced the outcomes and goals that were previously outlined in the 2012 Master Plan. In that sense, the city already has a pretty well-formulated vision for West Lebanon and a menu of potential strategies and actions for promoting the area. The charrette effort further refined some of those master plan concepts into actual alternatives for the city to consider as it moves forward with developing working plans for short, mid, and long-term revitalization efforts in West Lebanon Village. For next steps, we would like to wrap up the charrette phase of the effort by finalizing the summary report. We need to continue to engage the community and decision-makers in order to prioritize projects so that we begin to direct resources toward its implementation. And with that, I'll answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Great, thank you very much, David. I should note that Councilors Hill and Prentice are participating by phone now, so they're available and online, and certainly free to ask. so they're available and online, and certainly free to ask any questions they may have. This, of course, is a public meeting, and this is a very, very public report. We had over 200 respondents to the survey that went out prior to the actual charrette, and we had a pretty good attendance at the charrette itself, at the various iterations we had over the week and the weekend. So if there's anyone from the public online who would like to comment on the charrette or the report that we've just received, the preliminary report, please feel free to do so now. Okay. This is not the only opportunity. Someone from the public wants to comment. Certainly jump in at any time. We'll try to recognize you. In the interim, councilors, any comments, please?
Counselor Belo here. Yeah, I'd just like to commend everyone who was involved in the process with the charrette process and effort and report. All the citizens who participated, and the way the report's been put together, I think we had a lot of bang for our buck. I think the quality of the thoughts and work that's gone into this, you know, it's of similar quality to the downtown Lebanon study that was done almost at a fraction of the cost. So I'm glad we went ahead and didn't wait for, you know, more elaborate analysis. And I guess the sort of elephant in the room that we've all been grappling with is the West Borough Yard. And I was just curious that it just hints at the possible connection between sort of Area 1 and Area 9, the riverfront, that would connect along the river. And I was just wondering if folks are more familiar with this and the history with the state DOT, is whether there's a sense that that's off the table with them right now? Or obviously, you know, the thing that would be really exciting is if we could connect the whole length of the waterfront passing underneath the railroad bridge with, you know, over what I believe is an existing city sewer right-of-way down along there. And I just wondered, you know, how that fits into the long-term vision. It's something we're still trying to lay the groundwork for.
David, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. That was discussed during the charrette. It is discussed in the report. It is certainly an opportunity there. The city already maintains and has an easement over that property from DOT. Right now, it is drafted solely as a sewer main easement, and I believe it only allows for access for maintenance and repair purposes. I believe it is talked about, and the idea of communicating and negotiating with DOT to allow broader access to that right-of-way, that easement area, would be a terrific opportunity. I know that the area and the potential to use the railroad bridge for pedestrian use was studied many years ago. It certainly is technically feasible. It comes down to political will and liability issues and things like that. So yes, it is definitely one of the options that the city could pursue as we continue to pursue other issues relative to the state in the West Borough Yard.
I think if we pull the camera back even a little bit further, there have been some discussions in the past of potentially linking the River Park site down along the river to the boat landing, and then from there, all the way to West Borough Yard, and from there to the greenway. And I think ultimately, that would be a great goal to pursue. So this would take it, you know, all the way, you'd be able to get all the way from downtown Lebanon right through to West Lebanon, through downtown West Lebanon, all the way to River Park. I think that the key thing about the section, potential section of trail between the boat launch site and the West Borough Yard is really the controlling of both ends so that there is a destination at both ends, and it's just sort of not a path to nowhere. Other than that, I think really good lighting, making that attractive, and a safe-feeling route would be critically important. But without a destination at both ends, that becomes more difficult to do. So I think that the work we're doing on West Borough Yard, ultimately, we can get those buildings down and get that area redeveloped into some sort of, preferably recreational use, and then complete the work at the north end would then help to facilitate the trail in between and would give us a good argument to make to the DOT to allow us to expand our use there. Yes, so just a couple of things to add.
Mayor McMath, Aaron, when it's appropriate?
Yeah, I'm just gonna let the city manager make his comment, and certainly, absolutely. So just to get everybody up, just to remind everybody where we're at, where we're at with the various projects that apply to this very area. We have the Route 12A, so-called Dry Bridge Project that is scheduled for 2022 to occur. We're in the finalized processes of making a, the finalized plan as to exactly what's going to occur. And of course, the access order is that last remaining issue, the 50-50 pot share, we're still waiting for DOT. They pitched that idea, and we agreed to it, waiting them to actually confirm that the higher-ups at DOT are in concurrence with that plan. That'll allow us to finish the design and move forward on that project. That's a key component of that. We also have our application to lease or purchase the West Borough Yard, and that is contingent upon the building is being demolished. As you know, this is state appropriation, and this year's budget to do that, the state budget. And we're waiting, that's being finalized and working on the agreement, the city to take the demolition degree at our landfill. That is in the head of the general's office right now. The DOT has agreed to the wording that we put forward in there, that the changed wording. So that is now in front of the agent for final approval, and hopefully we'll get that back soon, which will allow that project to occur. Of course, the only concern that we have right now is the potential impacts in the state budget due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So that's, every state project is at a certain degree of risk, and we don't have an answer on that yet. So that's where the present projects are. We also, Parks and Rec, and I have the Inter Parks and Rec Director, who's available to speak on this, we have a project that we can actually partake right away, I mean, this year to do, that would help improve the quality of life in West Lebanon. Rick, if you could speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, Sean. Though this project falls outside of the charrette area that was focused on, it is, the city has acquired a parcel in West Lebanon. Dave, do you mind if I could put up my paperwork here for a minute?
Absolutely. I will stop sharing.
All right, I apologize it. See if we can get this up here.
We can see it.
Oh, you can see it. Excellent. Good.
So for those of you on the phone, this is a parcel just to the south of Smithfield on Maple Street. It's the north end of Maple Street in West Lebanon.
That is correct. And so the city acquired this property in 2011, and when it was deeded to us, it was deeded that it would become a park. And certainly, the Recreation Department has identified this parcel as a prime location for development. The West Lebanon neighborhood is very walkable. It's also being adjacent to Smithfield, which is owned and operated by the Lebanon Youth Baseball Association. This is a spot where people already go to recreate. And if you've been to a ballgame on a Saturday afternoon, you see lots of kids running around the field, and they have no real good place to go and play, perhaps while their siblings are participating in a ballgame. So we have moved forward with, you know, working with the Lebanon Youth Baseball Association, also in conversations with the church across the street, what types of things would they envision being valuable there? And certainly, a playground came to mind, as well as improved parking. I have included pictures of the current parking situation. On a nice spring day, you could go for a swim. And then just past the parking, we have a playground design here that we would very much like to implement.
Thank you. Counselor Hill?
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I didn't mean to cut off recreation. I think that looks like a really wonderful project, and I'm honestly quite delighted at the findings from the West Lebanon charrette. And I find it very promising, and like Counselor Belo said, a very good bang for our buck. And I think the consistency with the master plan of 2012 just helps to reinforce that we already know the right path, and we just need to keep moving forward. So I have a comment and then a question. One comment in response to Counselor Belo's question about the water and sewer, the easement there, and the historical nature of that. Over the last, well, probably about 15 years ago, we started having discussions with the state. The Rotary Club of Lebanon has had a String of Pearls project that people might recall, but the idea was to connect different points along the Mascoma River. And part of the String of Pearls project...
Dial star six, please. Counselor Hill, we've lost you. Dial star six. There you go. That's okay.
There was the String of Pearls project. And then, and so originally, the counselor or the mayor was talking about destinations. And the actual, the idea for the West Borough Yard was that the West Borough Yard, while it's a destination unto itself, it also has a destination to the north at the redevelopment of the River Park project that David Clem proposed and is working on now, but that it also had a destination to the south following the water and sewer easement all the way to the sewer treatment plant on, at the intersection, or the confluence, rather, of the Connecticut and the Mascoma River, right there, which, and the street, I think, is now called Market Street. And that the String of Pearls was ultimately going to continue along Market Street and then connect up with the Glen Road and the path along the Glen Road to the skate park and the trail there. So that was originally what the discussion was, to connect, to have a true riverfront, a riverfront trail that would go all the way from River Park, where David Clem is, all the way to the sewer treatment plant on the Connecticut and Mascoma River there, and then to connect up with the rail trail. There was some concern with property owners along South Main Street there who had questions about a trail right through their backyards. So that was some of the, that's also an outstanding question. I guess one of the questions that I have is about, right there at Bridge Street, the area that has been identified as a little, kind of a park, a pocket park that would have a car-top boat launch, right there, kind of across the street from State Line Sports. Where are we in terms of getting that done? Because I'm glad to hear about the recreation project that was just discussed, but the most, I guess, imminent project that I had been thinking of for downtown West Lebanon was the car-top boat launch and the pocket park on Bridge Street that has served as a staging location for state construction projects over the last few years. I thought that we were going to be turning that into a pocket park pretty soon. What's the status of that particular project?
There is no project there. There's the, the current of the water there is not conducive to be able to put boats at that particular location. This was a discussion we had last year with Paul Coates. It's just not amenable to do that. I mean, the land's out there, the roadways, it's already built out there that you can see on the previous diagram that David Brooks had put up. Yeah, that one right there. But there's no, there's no plans, there's no other project to do anything else at that location due to the current that's there.
Okay, but it might not be good for a boat launch, but it's still a good, I mean, the picture you're showing right now still showed it as green space and a pocket park for downtown West Lebanon. Is that going to be realized? I mean, there is, we even persuaded or worked with the state to create a nice, a graduated slope with a sidewalk to get down into that space, and they did do that. Are we not intending to finish the pocket park?
I'm not sure what it is you're proposing to finish. I'm not sure what you're asking us to do other than what's already been done at that location.
There's been a project, there's been a project in the works for 15 years at that site.
That's correct, and we don't have all the land we were supposed to get. There's issues with being able to have handicap access to get down to that location, and we don't, again, we don't have the ability to safely put boats in the water due to the current. You'd have to build some sort of rock structure in there so that people could put their boat in there and they wouldn't be going across the current. And that requires a significant permitting process to do that. It's not amenable to that. There was a discussion we had last year with Parks and Rec on this issue.
But there's no requirement, it doesn't have to be a boat launch. It can still just be a nice green space and a park for downtown West Lebanon. Right now, it's not a park. Right now, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. I thought we were going to be finishing that.
Again, I don't know what you're asking, what else you want to finish, what else you're proposing to do at that particular location. We had this discussion last year. I'm not, I don't understand what else you're asking us to do.
All right, I'll follow up afterward, the meeting. Thank you.
Let me note that Counselor Sykes is also now joining us. Welcome, Counselor Sykes. Other councilors? Yes, Counsel winning, please.
Thank you. Like others, I think the charrette is a good thing and has come up with some interesting ideas. Couple of personal thoughts. I think that the site at 12A and Main Street there, that maybe a pocket park, I'm not sure a pocket park is the best use of that site. I think that's a pretty prime site for some redevelopment, but...
Do you think of the three Seminary Hill site?
That's the one. Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I think it's pretty small for a pocket park, and it's got pretty busy roads on two sides, so I'm not sure how attractive it would be. And there's sort of only residential on the one street, and then you're looking at the Dana House and Seminary Hill School and a whole bunch of fields up to the top of Seminary Hill. So I don't see that getting a whole lot of use as a park. But overall, I like it. I'm, the concepts, of course, one of the questions is always how to pay for this stuff. And one of the things I've talked about a little bit over the last year or so is possibly a TIF district for West Lebanon, which might be able to help with some of those improvements and encourage for the development of Main Street. I think if we could include some of River Park in that TIF district, that might help, you know, sort of being the project in hand that has been talked about for getting a TIF district going. So I'd like to see some consideration on that. And yeah, keeping West Lebanon moving.
Yeah, I just want to chime in that I too think that the three Seminary Hill location may not be the optimal location for a pocket park, and that I would suggest an alternative might be to sell that property with some sort of understanding of the type of building and use of building that would go in there, and that the proceeds from that could well go towards some other improvements in the downtown area. So we would then see, you know, a prominent new building at that location. And, you know, the funds for the sale of that land could be go towards some other... And, you know, the funds for the sale of that land could be, go towards some other beautification efforts. If we included that in the TIF district, the funds that would flow from additional property taxes from that site could also go into the TIF district and be utilized for efforts on Main Street. So my initial thought is, my preference would be that there are better sites for pocket parks. That site might be a better site for a, a nice new prominent building.
Yeah, and especially if Westboro Yard is going to become available as a park, then you're going to have a small pocket park essentially right across the street from a fairly significant park. And, and so I, again, I think that may not be the sort of best and highest use of that space. But, you know, another one of the sort of limitations we have in, in Main Street West Lebanon is, you know, there's a couple auto parts stores that are pretty big. There's a couple tire stores that are pretty big. And so there's not a whole lot of, of kind of interesting things to walk to. And obviously, you know, that's, that's something we have to rely on, on, you know, some private entities or individuals to, to work towards. The city's not going to be buying up those sites and doing anything with them. But, you know, street improvements and things like that, especially if we can get the funding through some kind of a TIF project, may help other people move in and do those things. Sort of like what the Country Cobbler Building has, has done.
A couple more quick points before I turn back to other counselors. Having lived in the Maple Street, Timothy Ave area, Crabs Ave area for a couple of decades plus, I can attest to the fact that Smith Field, Baseball Field has been and is extensively used by the community. Prior to the Seventh Day Adventist Church and School moving out, there was a small playground beside the school that was actively utilized by the siblings of kids who were playing Little League ball. When that facility was sold, that playground, the availability of that playground disappeared. And I agree that since then, there really has been nowhere for the smaller kids to play while their siblings were having a baseball game. So I think that being able to utilize that property next door, which is really now just sort of a mud hole that's kind of used for parking, turning that into a playground for a relatively modest expense and an improved parking area would really, really help both the users of Smith Field, Baseball Field, and the neighborhood in general. So between that playground and the playground behind Mount Leaven School, I think that would be, you know, a really nice addition to that particular residential section of West Lebanon.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is David Brooks. I just wanted to comment on the TIF district. I have begun to look into that just to the, as far as verifying that the areas of a potential district and the current valuations of a potential district fit within the statutory limitations, and they definitely do. And that includes, that could include a district that would stretch from River Park, encompass Main Street, and could even extend as far as Iron Horse, depending on what happens with that project. All of that as a single district fits within the statutory limitations in terms of lot area and valuation, even with the cumulative impact with figuring in the other two districts that have already been created. So I have looked in, as far as that, and I'm happy to go farther if instructed to do so.
I personally would like to see that.
Great. I think I would as well. It certainly is worth further study and discussion as to whether that's something we would want to implement in the future. So my opinion would be, yes, let's continue to evaluate it and bring it before a future council meeting for discussion.
Very good.
The other area, before I forget it, that came out of the Sharet that I really had not considered before, but I think is actually very interesting, is trying to do something with the Tracy, Main Railroad Avenue intersection there. Whether it's narrowing up the streets or trying to sort of push green, green space out into that intersection, I think that's a very interesting opportunity. We know we're going to be studying the future of our forestation. At that location, there may be some redevelopment opportunities there. That's really a critical intersection. And I think beautification of that area and bringing some sort of green, green space out into that streetscape would be very positive. You know, I recall as a kid growing up in West Lebanon, it was certainly much more of a tree-lined street even back in the 60s than it is today, where we basically have one large tree remaining on Main Street in front of the bank. There were more than that when I was growing up. And if you look at the photograph of the Sharet from 1905, you realize how bucolic downtown West Lebanon looked when there were trees on both sides overarching the street. If we could bring some of that back, I think it would really benefit the area. In the 1980s, when that area was last subject to any sort of urban renewal, a number of smaller trees were planted and frankly, in the intervening 30-plus years, not all of them have survived and those that have, have really not grown a lot. So there are now ways through things like silva cells and other mechanisms to facilitate the growth of healthy street trees. Those, those options really weren't available in the 80s. But I would love to take at least a section of Main Street and really green it up again. Counselors?
I have a thought.
Counselor Belo, then Counsel Heistin.
Yeah, it sounds like some great ideas. I think the idea of moving ahead with considering a TIF district makes some sense in the greening up. And I'm a little curious about, more about the timetable for the playground at Smith Park. And if that, if you consider in that timetable, if you have considered whether to have more of a community participation at the point at which we can work together again to construct the playground, or if it makes more sense to just go with a purchase design. I've noticed some communities that I've visited where there was sort of community-constructed playgrounds with volunteers. Obviously, you still have to get the materials and such, but just curious about that.
So I'll just note before the staff response that the playground, the current playground behind Mount Leaven School was a community construction project. I participated in that when our, when our children were little, so it was a very successful win. Rec Department, would you like to talk about that?
Yes, certainly. There are many playground builds that are successful with the community build model. The current design that we do have, we can go with a community build. The manufacturer has warned about this particular design being one that's a bit more complicated to assemble. If you ask Sean, you know, we have those little houses that are on Coburn Park that we recently added. And how many times did we have to put that together?
I'd rather not say. Quite a few. To Rick's point, there's some liability issues here with us doing that. And it, we had a group of volunteers that put those structures together. It took us all day to do that. We had to do it several different times. It's, they're pretty complicated, they're pretty intricate, and then there's warranty issues. And especially if somebody gets hurt, this type of structure, you take note of that. It's here where kids are actually going to be climbing on it. There's going to be some height from the ground. There's some risk with trying to do it that way. You have to be cautious of that. So maybe we could at least think about bringing the community in to review the design with them and maybe get some ideas if somebody thinks of some different things we might do in advance. I think that would be useful. Also, even simple things like shoveling the rubber or the bark mulch or whatever is in there and raking that out is something that the community could certainly get involved with if they don't get involved with construction of the structure itself. But I do think it would be great to get some neighborhood involvement prior to just having it simply show up.
Certainly. And those conversations have been started with the Lebanon Youth Baseball Association. They are 100% behind this project and offered, you know, their help in assisting to see it come to fruition, as well as the church that now exists across the street. They would be willing to lend some labor as well, but happy to continue that conversation.
Right. Thank you. What we'll do is we'll schedule a community conversations meeting to do that. And then unless there's any injection of money that's already appropriated for West Lebanon improvements, we can actually move forward on that project, right? So we'll have a lot of community conversations. The question is, do you want us to come back for the council again or just move forward? That's what I need to know. So, Counselors, we have the money in hand to do this, that we had already appropriated for use in West Lebanon. Does anyone have any objections to staff moving forward with this so we can get it done this year? Would you like another review?
I'm wondering if the project is primarily just this, this play area or if there's fencing and paving of a parking area. What would be, what's the budget? How much money do we have left over from our appropriation after having done the Sharet to implement this? And what do you see as the scope of the project and the timetable?
Rick, we'll switch to Rick's screen again so he can actually show you the budget piece of that.
So you see, you see the budget includes the removing of some of the trees that are there, the necessary excavation work for the playground, the playground for itself, the paving of the parking area, fencing, which is an appropriate barrier between the parking and the playground. You know, the concrete curb stops, another helpful tool for parking areas. And then just from every home improvement project I've ever done, I've learned that you need a little bit of a contingency. So a total overall project of right around $115,000.
And how many parking spaces does that end up with? And does the fence probably extends along Route 10 North Main Street as well, or what?
So the fence would... If you see here, there's actually a row of trees in, just off of right field of the baseball field, Baseball Diamond. The parking area is the only thing that would be fenced in with a gate going to the playground, which would be just outside of the parking area.
Okay.
And I would have to get the square footage and calculate the number of parking spaces we would be able to attain.
Do we feel comfortable, do we feel comfortable that we could at least maintain the current number of parking spaces? I know that on some baseball lights, it gets a little short there and there are cars parked on the road. I think sometimes they park in the church parking lot as well. Perhaps they could continue to support that?
Yes, they are a good partner in this and willing to allow continued use of that. They also utilize this parking as it is now. And we would not lose any parking areas, only potentially gain them by really cleaning the area up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
From a budget standpoint, I checked in with the finance director earlier today. Of the original $465,000 that was budgeted for West Lebanon capital improvements, including Three Seminary Hill, there's about $390,000 remaining. And the Sharet process and the, and the final report were all paid for from, through the planning department's operating budget. It did not come out of the capital funds.
So our expenditures of the capital fund today, I think, have just been the demolition expenses for the building.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yes. So we have plenty of money left that we've already appropriated to do this project with plenty left over.
That's, that's correct.
Great. Counselors?
Sounds good.
Still waiting for time, Tim.
Yes, I've got you in line here, Counsel Heistin. You're next. Go ahead.
I want to say that it's been wonderful seeing so much energy going into West Lebanon and that Lebanon has deserved this for a long time and it's about time that you got all the attention we could get. I agree with the greening up the trees. And if we notice the differences in the temperature, whether you're walking up Bank Street or whether you're out underneath the sunshine, it's quite a difference when you get a friendly shade to walk under and West Lebanon could use quite a few. The Smith Field, when I was involved with Little League, was always a place for the little kids to go and it's really good to have that handy. So I'm, I think that's a great, great addition. Seminary Hill is, the image that you'll see as you're leaving West Lebanon is heading out of town. That's a fairly important vision that you're going to be carrying with you as you leave. So whatever happens there should be something that gives a nice impression for West Lebanon. Thinking about water flow coming down the river, one of the prime concerns about that is that you have a fluctuating water flow coming out of the dam. That electricity goes to Boston and whenever they need power, like 3:00 in the afternoon on an August day, that's when the dam opens up more and you got a higher flow coming out. It's shut down during the morning when you don't need the power. And as you know, we have lost people down at Summer Falls. There are adults who are unable to stand up. And it's, I think, very irresponsible to think about putting small people into the river high above, above or below the dam. But hurry for West Lebanon, then we get something going and let's see what we can do to make it happen this summer.
Thank you, Counsel Heistin. Other counselors?
Yeah, this is Counselor Sykes.
Yes, Counselor Sykes.
Yeah, I would, I'm glad to see the Smith Field project. I think we should move forward with it.
Okay.
Counselor Winnie?
Yes, Counsel Winnie, please.
Agreed on the playground. I, I think that's a good idea. And I drive by there sometimes when ballgames are going on and parking is a little rough. And sometimes kids are playing on that little strip between the street and the ball field and other places. So giving them something a little better would be great. I'm fine with spending the money on that. And I think, you know, maybe looking at some of the other money we have left over and considering some of the streetscape improvements would be a good thing as well. So I don't think we need to, I personally don't feel the need to sort of, you know, see the playground project again. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to be aware of it, but I don't think it needs to come before us from my standpoint.
Any other counselors feel that we need another look at the playground? Or if the staff engages the stakeholders and moves forward, is that okay?
Fine with me.
Fine. This is Counsel Apprentice. Fine with me. Please go ahead.
Sounds good to me.
This is Karen Leo-Hill. Sounds good to me as well.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselors. I think that's great. Any other comments with regard to what we've heard tonight on the Sharet? Given that what David is looking for is some direction to go ahead and finish this up. And then perhaps we can begin to look at individual projects. Okay? Sounds like you can go ahead and proceed to finish it up, David. I think it was a, it was a great effort. Again, it, it was remarkably, I think, efficient for the amount of funds that we expended. And I think it gave us some, a real sense of direction from the, from the people involved. So very, very pleased. I'm very happy to see some positive things happen to downtown West Lebanon. So thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Couple more items on our agenda for this evening. The next one is a discussion regarding reconvening the Class 6 Roads Advisory Committee. And I'll just sort of sum this up. This discussion came about largely in the context of the Class 6 Roads on and abutting the Patch Family property. As a result of that, we found that, well, the Class 6 Roads Committee had done a lot of really great work and hadn't quite been completed when the committee stopped meeting in 2017. So the thought now is to reconvene that committee. So the thought now is to reconvene that committee to wrap up these last, I think there are seven or eight Class 6 Roads, of which four are involved with the patch discussion and bring that to closure. The existing committee was comprised of folks who were serving on and are currently serving on other city boards. While we can change the constituency of that committee, my suggestion would be that we, if these folks who were serving on it before are still willing to do this and they are all still serving on city boards, we could simply allow that committee to be reconvened with its current membership with the direction that they are to move forward and resolve the ownership situation and make recommendations on the remaining Class 6 Roads in the city. So having said that, I will open that up to discussion. Staff, any comments to make on it prior to that discussion? No, we will have staff support. That's what you wish to do. As before, we have Mark Goodwin that would assist you with that effort, that committee. Councillors, what do you think?
I have a comment, Tim.
Yes councillor Heistad, please.
The council, I mean, the committee was very active for quite a while and we made three quarters of the way around the town. And the roads on the west side of 120, we addressed and some were thrown up and some were not. We addressed the ones on the east side where the patches are. And it was considered at that time that the roads were of value and we decided not to take action on it. We have also another member who used to be chair that has offered to be on the committee if that was the pleasure of the, of the council and that's Steve Wood. And he was chair of the committee in the beginning and stepped down. So if we wanted to have a representative from the, from the community, he is available to step back up if that is something that council wanted to do.
Now, I believe he was acting as one of the city council representatives to the committee at that time because it was when he was on the council?
That he was.
Okay. So I guess a question for staff is if we want to request additional people on the committee beyond those that are currently serving on other committees, it would be their designated representatives, what's our procedure? So you'd have to make a motion to do that, but then if you added one citizen representative, you'd be at six people. You made an even number and I would not recommend that. You'd want to be at seven so that you have, there's a full type voting issue. So if you wanted to do that, you could make a motion to add two positions, I would suggest two positions to that committee. You could do that now if you chose to do so. Councillors, do you have interest in that? Yes councillor Hill?
Yes. Do we, has anyone reached out to the folks who would become members by virtue of their positions and are they willing to serve presently?
I do not know the answer to that. Is anyone else? Well, no, because we haven't, as I mentioned, it's going to be reconstituted. If that's the case, we would go back and ask those committees to assign representatives because if they are representatives of those respective committees, it may or may not be the same persons that are listed on here now that would be under those committees. Okay. So if that were to be the case and we were to add to this committee, we would have, I think, five representatives of existing city bodies and then two citizen representatives. That's sort of what we're talking about here. Yes, I'm sorry, is that councillor Hill?
Would, would any further action be required? Seven seems like a good number for a committee. Does any further action, is that required of us tonight to make it more than seven?
Yes, you have to make a motion to add two, in this case, two citizen positions to bring the committee up to seven members. That would be a motion along those lines.
I have a question.
Currently, we are at five and then if we, tonight, we're being asked to consider adding two to make it seven.
I think councillor Heistad is suggesting that, that former councillor Wood might be interested in participating. For him to participate, if he's not currently serving on a board, would mean we would have to add positions and they would have to be community-marched positions. Which is certainly doable.
Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie, I'm sorry.
I heard Karen again, I don't know if she's finished.
I'm done, I have no opinion.
Okay.
I mean, I think there's a lot of community interest in the Class 6 Roads just at the moment, so it may make sense to add some community members to the board, based on what I've heard related to the Class 6 Roads anyway.
Thank you. Paula, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Could you remind us which boards send members to this committee currently?
Yes, one council representative, which is currently councillor Heistad, one Conservation Commission representative, currently Don Lacy, one Planning Board representative, currently Joan Monroe, one Pet and Bike Committee rep, currently Colin Smith, and one Heritage Commission representative, currently Raymond Book.
Thank you very much. So I personally, and I'll open up obviously to the other councillors, but I personally like the idea of adding a couple of citizen reps. If someone would be interested in making that motion this evening, we could certainly act on that.
So move.
So can you state your motion councillor Heistad?
Caroling Heistad makes a motion that we increase the number of members of the Class 6 Roads Advisory Committee by adding two citizen representatives in addition to the five already representatives of other committees.
Thank you councillor Heistad. Do we have a second for that? Yes, thank you. Was that councillor Hill or councillor Zook? I'm sorry. You broke out. Councillor Hill, thank you very much. Councillor Hill makes the motion, councillor, sorry councillor Heistad makes the motion. Councillor Hill seconds. Is there any discussion before we take a vote?
Paula Mayall, yes.
Yes, Paula, please.
You need to assign a term because your board reps, their terms go with their terms on those respective boards. So you're going to have to assign a term for your public reps.
It'd be for a two-year, two-year term.
Okay, this is second okay with a two-year term?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is that we expand the membership of the Class 6 Roads Advisory Committee from the current five, who would be representatives of five city boards, to a total of seven with the additional two being community members and a term limit of two years, who will be appointed by the council. Correct, who will be appointed by the council. Okay, let's have a vote on it.
Councillor Hill? Just wanted, I presume that means we should advertise the positions and have a period of time where people can apply?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, good.
Just like any other committee, absolutely. So we'll bubble size it and, and get applications in that the council could consider. Okay, councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Thank you councillor Zook. Councillor Heistad?
Councillor Heistad votes aye.
Assistant Mayor Beal?
Councillor Beal votes yes.
Councillor Prentis?
Councillor Prentis votes yes.
Councillor Sykes?
Councillor Sykes votes yes.
Councillor Hill?
Councillor Hill votes aye.
And the mayor votes yes, it's unanimous. Thank you very much folks, that was a very productive discussion. The last regular item on our agenda tonight is the 2021-2022 proposed legislative policy and I believe the city manager wants to have a discussion on this. Yes, this is for every town and city in the state. Now, actually, as of this year, every single town and city in the state is a member of NHMA. There was one holdout, two holdouts, Merrimack and Salem, and they have subsequently joined. So all those communities will actually have a vote and we actually have the conference at the end of the process. The beginning of the process allows any municipality to submit recommended policy positions. I know it says June 27th, the date was actually changed to June 12th. It was actually this month, but because of COVID-19, it's been pushed back. So by June 12th, any municipality, any member of any municipality can submit a legislative policy position for the committees to review. There are three committees. One is for energy and infrastructure, the second is on finances for municipalities, and the third is general government administration. Those committees will take those submissions and review those, refine if they deem it appropriate, and then submit the final list to the full delegation, which means every town and city gets a vote when we have that. It's only done in the fall. Not sure what is going to happen this year, whether it's going to occur this year, it may get pushed into 2021, but that remains to be seen. So what we need to do at this point, if we wish to participate in this process, is to come up with any legislative policy positions that we think that NHMA should be advocating on behalf of all towns and cities in the state. One of the things we're doing a little bit differently, and a lot of those have been, I call micro-type policy positions, and some of the big picture issues have not traditionally been addressed by NHMA. For instance, NHMA does not have a policy position on right to know. It does not have a policy position on transportation or housing or climate change. Those are big picture type items. There are things within that that do have policy positions on. But those are some of the things that we're going to be asking on Friday, as a matter of fact, or the directors will be deciding upon whether or not he will ask those committees to consent those issues and develop policy positions. In the meantime, again, every town and city can submit those. So what we need to think about is members of the council and staff members, if you have anything that you would propose for a policy position for NHMA on any municipal issue, now would be the time to work on those and get those submitted to NHMA. So we've got a little time, councillors, we've got another six weeks, six to eight weeks or so, to come up with some suggestions. I know that a couple of things that councillor Beal certainly brought up first, but we've discussed a little bit, are positions regarding things like renewable energy policy and climate change policy. I would suggest that renewable energy policy from my standpoint is particularly important because it's been so weakly supported, weakly supported in state government in Hampshire compared to surrounding states. So that's one I would certainly like to see other councils make of other areas.
And councillor Bead, as the mayor mentioned, I've, you know, after the city manager's comments at the last city council meeting on this, I've been thinking about it. I think that's a really good idea and in fact, I'm on the edge of volunteering to serve on this Infrastructure Development and Land Use Committee that also deals with energy issues. I'm going to bring that up with LIAC and some of the other communities in the state, the idea of trying to have a broad general policy that can represent a broad consensus of municipalities on energy and climate issues. So I'm excited by that thought and leadership that the city manager has suggested.
This is councillor Sykes with a question.
Councillor Sykes, please.
Do we know if the municipal association has adopted a position on whether cities and towns should be able to have a separate for them tax revenue on room rentals as have been proposed by, in the legislature in the past?
Yes, that is a, it's more, it's a more of a general policy position to allow municipalities to find other sources of revenue and that of course fits within that. They also include the motor vehicle registration fees, there's a number of those that fit within that general category that's already existing. And of course, it will be up to the committees and the conference committee to decide whether or not that remains on there. I suspect it probably will.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because that, that would be an area that I think we should be trying to get them to support for our city and other cities' benefits.
How about funding for education? That's an area that we've traditionally not been involved in because in Hampshire, there have been a couple of cities and we're not one of those, we don't actually have a mission for education that's done by a separate independent school district. And they have their own group that works on that. So traditionally, when that has come up, and it does come up quite frequently, that has been, the decision has been that we will not take a position on those matters. Correct, thank you. That doesn't mean we can't advocate for one city if we choose to. Right. Councillors, any other broad overarching topics? I do like the idea of broader policy positions. I think it gives the NHMA members some flexibility within those broad areas to separately advocate for more targeted legislation, legislation.
Something that's been important in Lebanon is housing.
So just on that councillor Hill, we would just need to solidify what that broader, because again, NHMA does not have one on housing and it's clearly a major issue as well as solid waste in our state. So we would have to craft that and I suspect that's going to go to the subcommittee that I'm chair of anyway. So that's one that we want to kind of, we want to work on with that language.
And it sounds like, I think Tim had said that we have a little bit more time to be able to craft that, but I would be interested in crafting some language around housing. I think language around, language around enabling legislation for cities and towns along the lines of what councillor Beal and councillor Sykes were talking about. Those would be the major issues for me. I guess property tax relief and housing are two major issues I would like to see NHMA lobbying in support of.
Agreed. Other councillors? Okay, what I would ask, continue to think about this, as I say, we've got, we've got six or eight weeks, time goes by very quickly. If something comes up, feel free to communicate directly to the manager or we can bring it up as other business at one of our main meetings. Okay. So that brings us, that brings us toward the end of our agenda and I'd like to address city manager reports. I know that the manager has a few things he wants to pass on to us. Yes, so there's a number of issues, of course, COVID-19 revenue expenditure projections. Right now, we're projecting both expenditures and losses of revenue of about $820,000 between now and the end of the year. That is a really rough estimate. We really can't tell what kind of impact we're going to have on water and sewer rates and only coming in a quarterly basis. So it's going to be difficult to really come to grips with that. We are going to have additional costs in a number of areas. A lot of that should be reimbursed under the Stafford Act, but they're not going to reimburse us for our loss of revenues and that's going to be a bigger issue. There was a conference call this morning, Senator Shaheen and another municipal officials in the CARES Act that was passed by Congress, doesn't specifically talk about reimbursing states or municipalities for lost revenue. And that is the biggest piece of the economic issue for towns and cities. It isn't so much the cost because a lot of that is covered by the Stafford Acts, 75% of it right now, but we're expecting it's actually going to be 100% by the time all the issues are addressed at the federal level. So really, it's the loss of revenue that's the biggest problem for us that we're dealing with. And Senator Shaheen has sent a letter as well, sent it to Hassan and a senator from Maine and one from South Dakota. They sent that to the Secretary of Treasury and asked him to put clarifying language that's supposed to come out next week that would go to the states and the larger cities in the country, none of our cities, that would specifically indicate that municipalities and states can use money to, use that CARES money, that $1.25 billion the state is getting, to help offset some of the losses in revenue. So we'll see what actually happens with that, but it doesn't specifically say that and Senator Shaheen was quite specific about that issue. So we'll see what happens with that. We're expecting that to occur next week, the state to get its guidance. I listened to the Gopher meeting today that probably ended around 6:00 tonight. They're supposed to, the governor has set that committee up to decide how $1.25 billion of funds will be distributed to towns and cities, to states and other entities, nonprofit entities. And again, they really can't do much until they get that guidance. NHMA will be speaking as a representative, as well as two of the mayors, the mayor of Manchester and the mayor of Nashville, and one town administrator to be determined, will actually be able to speak to the Gopher Committee on Friday and talk about some of the issues. NHMA has conducted a survey, which we have completed, it's due It's due by 1:00 PM tomorrow from all municipalities to get some good data on what the projected losses are for towns and cities, as well as the projected additional expenses due to COVID-19. There will be subsequent surveys when we get better information. But right now, a lot of it's projection, and we don't really have a good framework to determine what those costs are. Unless there's any questions, I'll move on. Any questions about those particular costs or losses, that $820,000? We'll get into more details later on. Are there any initial questions on that? Hearing none. There's also, there was an emergency order that was passed by the governor that was at the request of the cities of Rochester and Keene and the town of Durham, which are allowed for property tax interest waivers. That is very problematic, the way that was written. The governor did as those communities had asked. It's enabled legislation, each town or city would have to do that. In our particular case, it would be the assessing board that would do it. The case of cities in towns, it would be the Board of Selectmen that would do that. But there are so many issues, technical, legal issues with that, that the guidance from NHMA legal staff is not to pursue that. And we feel the same way, that that would not be wise to do that. So you've probably heard about that. I want to make that very clear so you understand what the status is on that. City Hall renovations have, for the most part, have been curtailed. And that's due to a lot of contractors who are from the state of Vermont. And the governor of Vermont has issued an order that if you're a contractor, not an employee, but a contractor, which our construction companies clearly are, and they are employees of the contractor, they, if they're going to travel into the state of New Hampshire and do construction work, they have to stay in the state of New Hampshire and can't return until after a 14-day quarantine period. However, it doesn't apply if you're a resident of the state of Vermont and you're coming across the border to New Hampshire for any other type of job. You can still do that. So it's a bit odd, the order that was issued. But unfortunately for us, that has curtailed for the most part most of the work at City Hall. There is some work being done by New Hampshire companies on site there. But that is going to delay the City Hall project, which was projected to be completed at the end of September. And right now, we're looking at probably January 5th before they'll occupy the building. And that all depends upon what the future is. Right now, we are anticipating that the restrictions that you see right now will remain in effect through the month of June. And beyond that, nobody really knows. But we're planning, for all intents and purposes, that City Hall and our other buildings will continue in the lockdown status that they are in and will be conducting the restricted operations we have been since March, just before St. Patrick's Day. Let me jump in for a second. It's my understanding that this issue of Vermont contractors coming over the river to do day-to-day contracting work and then going home at night has been raised with Governor Sununu because it's a question not only for Lebanon, but it's for places like Keene and other river communities where we're heavily dependent on Vermont contractors for construction projects. And it's further my understanding that Governor Sununu had a discussion with Governor Scott on this, and Governor Scott was unwilling to bend. So right now, we are stuck with that. And for Vermont contractors to remain in compliance with the governor's order in Vermont, they simply cannot come across the border to work unless they would like to stay on our side of the border for the entire duration of the project and then quarantine themselves or isolate themselves for 14 days before re-entering the population of Vermont. So that's just not feasible for most of these contractors. That is not to say that there are not some coming across the border now because the orders are being actively enforced, but we don't know that that's going to change. And we certainly don't want to be encouraging people to break the law in Vermont. Thank you. Next item is Farmer's Market. Right now, it's scheduled to open on May 14th. However, I have not had a plan that I've been able to approve yet from Parks and Rec to be able to do that. There are going to have to be some pretty restrictive conditions to allow that to occur, to occur safely. So right now, that, again, I have not approved the plan to do that yet. There's a number of items that Rec has to do to satisfy what I think are the appropriate steps to make it, to allow it to occur safely. So we'll be back to you on that issue, hopefully at some point in the future. There was discussion, I got as well this morning, on the conference call with Senator Shaheen about the talk about a stimulus, $2 trillion in stimulus funds that the president has talked about. That really is on the drawing board right now. Senator Shaheen said that that is something that the Congress will probably deal with after they deal with these immediate needs that are occupying their time at the moment. But there has been some discussion about that. Department of General Services has sent out surveys to cities and towns looking for shovel-ready projects. We submitted, they only asked for 10. We submitted like 23 projects at what, $25 million or so? And I plan to submit more of those to make sure that people are aware we have a number of shovel-ready projects that could take advantage of such funds if they do become available. So we are working on that, just so you're aware. I sent out an email with the CARES Act in reference to the airport. That's certainly good news. We have an allotment of up to just over a million dollars. The city of Manchester, 12 million. T's got, I think it was 1.6 million, and we got just over a million. And the other airports really have very, very small amounts, like $20,000 or $30,000. So that's an allotment, but there's still a lot of questions about what we can and can't use that for. And it dates back from January 20th, and we do have to submit for the reimbursement as we go along. So I've asked the airport director of public growth to make further inquiries with FAA in regards to how we can utilize those funds. So I'll get back to you when we hear more about that. But again, that's some bit of news that that money is available to us now. And that's all I have for COVID-19. I have a number of issues. Any other questions about COVID-19 before I move on to unrelated matters?
I have, this is Councilor Hill. I have a question about, I guess I want to talk about something with regard to the planning board. It has to do with COVID-19 and our city policies about when we will resume meeting in person and those kinds of things. But I don't know if it's for now, or I should bring it up later.
Let's finish the manager report and then talk about that, if we could.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. PFAS litigation, one of the things that the city was looking at was whether or not we follow Mekes Quray, a friend of the court, petition in regards to the ongoing PFAS litigation. I have since stopped that activity. The matter is going before the Supreme Court. However, at the legislative level, there is a bill for the legislature that will legislate this standard, which has not been done before. And that would totally abridge the administrative rules process. So if they do that, this court case will be moot. I don't want to spend a whole lot of money for nothing. As you know, the legislature is presently suspended. It's unknown what is going to happen with the bills that are presently before it, whether or not those are going to actually be voted on at some point and become law, or whether or not we're going to call it a day and it's going to be next year before we take up bills again. We just don't have the answer on that. I know they're working through a number of technical issues. It's not easy to get over 400 people together electronically and do the votes that are required for the legislature to do that. So that's a bit of a challenge. And it certainly is not safe for those folks to be meeting to do that. That doesn't make any sense. So there's good reasons why they're suspended, obviously. So it's unclear what's going to happen with that. But I, I'm not spending any more money on that litigation because I don't think it's of any value to us. Whatever's going to happen is going to happen anyway. Our arguments were just supplemental to that. NHMA does have the same arguments that we have that have been submitted, and that's already being paid for through our dues for that purpose. 27th Street, as I alluded to earlier, that the building in the DPW, the old DPW building has been demolished. Those, the structures have been completely removed. And there's still, there's still a couple of environmental issues they have to remediate on site in terms of soil. Once that's taken care of, we'll have a clean site and be able to continue on with the development of that location. We had originally planned to bring the development agreement to you this month. However, we weren't able to do that because of a number of issues with COVID-19. We're hoping that hopefully in May, we can do that. There are a few remaining issues in the draft agreement that have to be addressed. And most of those revolve around the request that staff has made for workforce housing provisions to be in there for as many as 20 units. And then we're still working on a lot of the details. There's a number of questions on how that might go. So that's what's holding that up. And we're hoping to come to you in May with a proposed agreement that you can consider so we can move that project forward. Any questions on that? Westmore Yard, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilor Mexican? Did you have a question? Okay. Please proceed. All right, Westmore Yard status. The, I already talked about this earlier, the state appropriation is certainly a question in any state appropriation at this particular point due to COVID-19. So we're just waiting to see what happens with that. Certainly, that would be a good infrastructure project if somehow the state funds were removed. Hopefully, they're not. It's taken us a lot to get to this point, and I hate to have to lose those funds. But again, there's a lot of decisions that will be made in concrete over the next several weeks, and we'll see what happens with that. And again, the agreement regarding disposal is now for the AG to consider. And I don't know how long it will take them to get that back to us. As you can imagine, they're a little busy with some other matters right now. And then I'll move on to 37th North Main Street, status update on that. We have not been able to successfully serve the owner of that property. We believe he's out of the country. So there is a process. We'll start advertising in the newspaper for the next four weeks as part of the process that we have to do. We expect that to be done soon, obviously, at the end of that process. And then we're going to move forward with the court action, but we have to go through this step first because we have not been able to successfully serve the owner with a notice for the 155B proceeding. So that's moving forward. Route 12A Bridge Agreement, again, I talked about this earlier. We're just waiting for DOT. They proposed a 50-50 cost split for the access road. We're just waiting for them to actually, the commissioner to agree to that. So that's where that stands. Cybersecurity, there's been a number, there's been a heightened level of attack, attempted attacks on the city's cybersecurity system at the police department, as well as the spear phishing attack that occurred using the mayor's, a version of the mayor's email. And there's a number of product scams that are going on as well. So I encourage councillors, certainly using the city email system, to look very carefully at the emails that you get before you respond to those. And please do not forward any suspected emails to anybody else because if they are contaminated, you could spread the lab. But so far, we have not had a successful penetration of our cybersecurity perimeter so far that we're aware of. So we've been successful in fending those off for now. But there is a certain heightened attack that has occurred on the city's systems over the last several weeks. And that's all that I have, unless there's any further questions from you. Hearing none. Councilor Hill, thanks for your patience.
Oh, is it my turn?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for those updates to the city manager.
Councilor Hill, I was, have been recently appointed as the alternate member to the planning board. I serve as an alternate for Councilor Winnie. And on Monday, I participated in my very first planning board meeting as a city council representative. I have two concerns that I would like to bring before the city council, just more as informational. I don't think there's anything to be done this evening. But number one, the planning board, number one, it was my observation on Monday night that, over the course of a number of agenda items, that there were planning board members who appeared to me to be asking questions and making comments that were outside the scope of planning board purview. I will be following up with planning board staff this week. I have an orientation and a training scheduled. But I have served on the city council for 15 years. I'm fairly familiar with planning board, with the role and the responsibilities of the planning board. And it certainly struck me that there were planning board members who were making references to newspaper articles, to their own personal opinions, and to, and were raising questions and issues that were outside the scope of the planning board. I would like to raise that as an issue of concern to the city council, number one. Secondly, I was concerned at the meeting because right now, we are all operating, of course, under some exigent circumstances due to COVID-19. And the council, planning board, I'm sure the zoning board and maybe other boards are also meeting pursuant to executive orders of the governor that allow us to meet and conduct business virtually, not having to meet quorum requirements. Apparently, with regard to land use boards, the governor has extended certain, certain abilities to modify timelines. And I guess my take on it, and I think the planning staff somewhat corroborated this, is that at this point, planning boards have the ability to put a complete pause on their operations and to delay planning decisions. Or they can meet in these sort of emergency situations and conduct their business virtually. On Monday night, it appeared that the planning board was prepared to treat a certain application that has a certain level of public interest in a different light than other applications. Meaning that the planning board was continuing to act in their normal course of business while actually adding an extra meeting to allow for public discourse and engagement. But that they were continuing to make decisions on agenda items, but that there was a particular agenda item that they were prepared to actually postpone indefinitely until such time that the planning board might meet in person with the public in person. Therefore, treating that particular application differently than any other application before it. And it immediately struck me that this was putting the city, that this was creating exposure for the city. And so I spoke up and I brought that concern to the planning board. So I just wanted to bring those two issues before the city council tonight. Number one, that, I'm forgetting what my number one issue was, but you have it in your notes. And number two, the issue of equal protection and fairness for planning board applicants. I think it's one thing if the planning board decides that they don't want to conduct a business virtually, so be it. Or not necessarily so be it. I guess it's a question of policy for the city council. Do we want the planning board to be essentially putting a moratorium on planning and development for the city of Lebanon during the COVID pandemic? Or do we want them to be using the executive orders that allow us to continue business? I think that's a question that I wanted to raise to the city council. I was very uncomfortable on Monday night with the planning board possibly, A, treating applicants differently, cherry picking applicants based on whether they were contentious or complicated, which are very subjective, and B, making that kind of a policy decision for the city, which I don't particularly think is necessarily their purview.
Councilor Hill, I, the only experience I have of this is I did read the article, the paper this morning. And I wonder, in the case of that one particular application, if there are two alternate situations. One is where the applicant would desire to move forward in the virtual fashion and is being treated differently by the board, with the board saying, "Look, we don't want to move forward until we can have people in the room." And the second would be where the applicant says, "Okay, I get this. I'm willing to wait." And I don't...
Councilor Winnie, can I add some information here?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I was also at the meeting as the council representative. I share some of Karen Leo-Hill's concerns about purview of the planning board, her first issue. Regarding the second issue, the feeling that I got from the board, and certainly other people may have felt differently, but there was a very substantial amount of public response to this particular... public response to this particular plan. There were something like 70 people in the, in electronic attendance at the meeting, which I've covered a few meetings for Karen Zook when she was on the planning board, and there was not that many people in the room for anything that I can recall during my time. Numerous emails were received, and, and in this case, also the applicant themselves pointed out in the meeting that they would prefer to wait because of the amount of public interest. So I hear Counselor Hill's concerns, I feel like there is a material difference between this project and other projects, in that the amount of public response was orders of magnitude higher than anything else I've seen in my time on the planning board.
Counselor Winnie, would you have felt differently if the applicant had objected and said, no, I don't want to wait, I, I want to be heard?
Um, I think it would have been a much harder decision, I'm not sure exactly where I would have come down on it, but, but being that the applicant was, was in agreement with waiting until people could be physically present to voice their concerns, that made it certainly an easier decision from, from my perspective.
And Counselor, Counselor Zook here, if I can jump in.
Yeah, please, but then Counselor Hill.
With just a little bit of perspective, I think that may have been, and I apologize for not knowing the exact number, but the second or third time that that particular application had been on the agenda and had been continued at the request of the applicant. And so I, just for that little bit of additional historical background on that one particular application, that it may, it may not have been, it's possible that the applicant would have wanted a, an extension in any case.
Counselor Hill.
Thank you, and I think, you know, the applicant was not given an opportunity to speak at the meeting on Monday. I don't understand why that is the case. She sent an email, but we don't actually know what her position was, she sent an email early, immediately, but not necessarily based on something...
Counselor Hill, you're breaking up really badly, we can't hear you.
I apologize, can you hear me?
That's okay. Yes, perfectly.
Thank you. The applicant was never given an opportunity to speak on Monday night. She sent an email to planning staff early in the conversation, and I cannot, yes, but I can, that's my motivation.
You're, you're breaking up even worse now, I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
My concerns with the council, I'm uncomfortable, I didn't mention.
So, I, I know we didn't catch the end of, of what Counselor Hill was saying, she's breaking up pretty badly, but I understand that there is concern in, in what she observed, that even though this applicant apparently acceded to waiting until, until there's the opportunity to have a true meeting where people are in attendance and can, can speak up in a, in a non-virtual way, that may not always be the case, and that we certainly don't want to be put in a position where the planning board is treating one applicant differently than another without that applicant's agreement. So I guess what I would ask, and I certainly acknowledge what's, what's being said here, is if the planning staff could just take a look into this, seek the opinions of our two council reps to the board, and we can have a discussion about this at a future meeting, because we certainly do want everyone to be treated equally and fairly. I would certainly not want, personally, the planning board to shut their process down for the duration, because as the manager said a few minutes ago, we don't know how long the duration is going to be. It could be the end of May, it could be the end of June, we, we just don't know for sure at this point. And we had, before this started, a number of projects beginning to queue up, particularly residential projects, which, you know, we're obviously have a need for, and it would be a shame if we put those, put a stop to those reviews. So certainly, my opinion would be, we want the planning board to continue reviewing projects, but we want it to be done in a way that is fair and open and transparent to all applicants. Any other councils?
Heistad was also at the meeting, and I believe there was a question about the incompleteness of that application, that some information was not available at that time.
Okay. Well, we don't want to discuss individual applications here, that certainly isn't our purview, but I understand it, and I think we, we will look into it. Anyone else? Thank you, Counselor Hill, for bringing that up, I appreciate it, and thank you for your input, Councilors Winnie and Heistad. We don't have any reports tonight, that I'm aware of, of council representatives to other bodies, we usually do that on a quarterly basis, tonight is not the night.
I should make a, Mr. Mayor, I should make a...
Yeah, Council Street, oh, please.
I, I never got around to doing a written report for LIAC, but I did want to note at least a couple of things. One is that a year ago, the city applied for a Community Development Finance Authority Tax Credit Grant to fund the development of a, of a business plan, aggregation plan for the proposed Lebanon Community Power Municipal Electric Aggregation, and back around the middle of, we, we needed to get commitments for donations equal to $75,000 from businesses, which they could use 75% of as a tax credit, but it's still costing out of 25%. And through the generosity of a number of local businesses, we did meet that 75,000 goal back in the middle of March, before the March 31st deadline, so we do, you know, have some funding available to continue or to develop that plan. And concurrent with that, there's been a lot going on, working with other communities, developed the idea of Community Power New Hampshire as sort of aggregation of communities working together to implement this opportunity. So you will see, keep an eye out for your next issue of Town and City Magazine from the NHMA, there's a, going to be a little feature article in there about some of the, the efforts that we've been working on. I just wanted to alert the council to that.
Thank you very much. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Counselor Winnie moves to adjourn.
Thanks, Counselor Winnie. Give a second, Counsel Bilo seconds. Any discussion? No discussion, no discussion, all right. We'll have a roll call vote, Counsel Winnie.
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
Counsel Zook.
Counselor Zook votes aye.
Counsel Heistad. Counsel Heistad.
He's muted.
Counsel Heistad. Counsel Bilo.
Counsel Heistad votes aye.
Counsel Bilo.
Counselor Bilo votes yes.
Counsel Prentice.
Counsel Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Sykes.
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Counsel Hill.
Yes, Counsel Hill, yes.
Thank you. And Mayor McEnroe votes yes. We are adjourned, thank you again, folks. Again, this is a work in progress, I think we're getting better week by week, and we hope we'll continue to do so and not have to do this forever. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you.